What is your pleasure on your second agenda?
I'm Louie Cooley.
Second is all in favor. The next upcoming slide board meeting is Thursday, July 6th at 5:30. Do we have any slide board comments and nonsense?
I would like to give recognition particularly to Carly, who did a great job of arranging the retirement party for Ron Beal. It was a good time, a lot of neighbors showed up, people stayed and chatting with one another for a long time. It was really a very nice community event. Thank you, Carly.
People getting ready into business item number one, state road drainage. The Select Board met representatives from Maine DOT to discuss drainage concerns on the state road and the general area between New Meadows and Bull Rock. The Select Board will share the outcome of the meeting and next steps. I guess, I think the biggest revelation to me was what we... The concern was water rising across the street from where the parking lot is now. Looks like it's rose maybe eighteen to twenty-four inches. And we were trying to figure out what caused it. What came to light was apparently DOT put their latest culvert drainage on top of the other drainage. We thought it was beside, I believe or whatever, but apparently it is on top of that which may be causing the rise in water on the other side of the road.
No beavers, huh?
No beavers. Then, so the representative from MDOT allowed us how it would take a while because the reason they put the newest culvert in at such a high level was because in the meantime between the first and the last one that they put in utility lines, including the natural gas line that goes to BIW, were put in there. So they put, rather than dig under, they put it over. And of course, that's where all the, that's where all the problems started in 2016. When we stopped having a little skating rink on the state road, Bull Rock Road intersection, but collateral damage was then apparent. So, MDOT allowed us how it would take some time to get all permitting taken care of and the utilities to move their lines. But the problem would be alleviated. He estimated one and a half to two years to get all the permits taken care of. It is unfortunate, but it was nice to have the source of the problem identified and a plan to go forward for a long-standing project. So there's hope. That will be one now.
Sounds like you also accepted full responsibility for it, so it's not... Which is nice to have that confirmed officially.
They did?
They did.
So it was actually very nice to attend a meeting where all parties wanted to work together to come to resolution and then actually did that. Sometimes it's very hard to do and I did a great job of that. So hopefully eighteen months to two years, that problem will be resolved.
And Mr. Pickett can get his landmark.
Article number two. Anybody, any questions, comments on state road?
Business item two, four thirty-two mile low drainage. The Select Board conducted a site visit with the Road Commissioner after hearing about complaints made by the property owner. The Select Board will discuss the outcome of the site visit. A subsequent Freedom of Access Act request submitted by the appropriate order is included for review.
Can you tell me who came down?
All three of us.
Yep, okay.
Mary, do you want?
We looked at the, we looked at the situation and saw what was being identified as an issue. And Steve's plan was that, that the existing ditch could be deepened. And that was the most immediate situation. The Road Commissioner is able to make those determinations. We went down there mostly because we hadn't seen the site before, so...
But they planned about doing, what they didn't do with the culvert itself since it's all rusted out and the ditch across my property?
There was, there was no plan made for the culvert.
So what was the first attempt would be to dig that ditch on the... If you were driving down to your house on the right-hand side?
They need to dig the ditches the whole road. Did you look at the ditches coming down?
We did. Some of the problem is ledge, so it's going to take some time to go down through it. What he would like to do is drain that down over the hill?
Yes.
From your house?
Mm-hmm.
Not sure, but it's going to try digging and see how far he can get and see if the lead...
He's going to hit all rock because it was rock lined by Arthur back in the day. He dug that all out lined it with rock along with what's going across my property.
But it all depends on how deep, how big, how wide that ledge is and if he can get it to drain down over or not. So until he starts that project, I don't think we really have any answers other than knowing that...
So that's all the plans I'm doing?
Well, we don't know until he does it. What else there is to do? I mean, we have to start somewhere, see where the water goes before we keep throwing things at it.
But it's obvious, where the water is coming down, that it's not running, it's not natural. And if he continues with that, I just want him to prove it because I can prove it's not. So, I just, no, I'm just saying, if you're going to put a plan together, a plan includes everything that might take place, so everything can be looked at. The plan should be digging out the hill and, huh? The ditch.
Digging the, digging the road.
Correct, digging the road. And what any future plan could be about coming across the property with the culvert. That's a plan.
The culvert, I don't know a whole lot of culverts, but we've got the Road Commissioner, we have other people, look at this, this is a plan, this is where we're going to start.
Okay, can you send me that in writing? And say that everybody, selectmen, code officer, everyone who agrees to it?
Code officer was not there.
The code officer?
Well, this town has a habit from weeks, since I've gone through all the reports. It has a habit of saying, if an agreement's come to, well, all of a sudden two selectmen don't agree, so it's going to get thrown out. Or the code enforcement officer wasn't there and doesn't agree, so that plan is no longer there.
Code enforcement has nothing to do with roads.
Code enforcement officer does not have any jurisdiction over roads.
Okay.
The code enforcement has, officer has jurisdiction over shoreland zoning, houses being built.
Well, might I consider shoreline? Absolutely. So wouldn't you need to be there?
No. You're not building anything. It's, it's, it's a road. We, we need to, we need to follow the process. Let's see how the first procedure works on ditching the roads. And then if that doesn't work, there'll have to be another review. But we believe that this is a good solution to get the water down the hill.
Yes, you might get it down the hill, but it's still like a waterfall coming across. I have so much water in my yard. I have to weed whack over a third of it because my lawn mower won't go across it anymore. And my house is now starting to suffer damage from all of that water. It's filthy mints, everything underneath is fire. And I need a resolution as to what's going to happen with that portion of it.
And this is our first step. We don't have step two. You don't throw a hundred things at a twentieth.
That's not, that's two things.
And then you're going to go back and figure out which one worked and which one didn't.
So we know what's done and working, what's not.
We feel the decision is going to be a positive solution. Let's give it a chance.
Or let's move on to the society.
Let's give it a chance.
Okay, I need to know what the time to wait is. Can you?
Business item number three. The final GOPIF culvert vulnerability assessment for the towns of Hotspur, Pittsburgh, and West Bath was submitted by GDI Consultants. The report is included for review. Among other findings throughout the report, the recommended improvements for Sabino Landing are in table six. Recommended site improvements and next steps are in table seven. Next steps in project development. The plan for the landing is incomplete pending a boundary survey by an insured and licensed surveyor. This is separate from the scope of the GOPIF part.
Christine, do we have that survey?
The boundary survey?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's incomplete, which is what Kathy just read.
I thought it was completed, we were just waiting.
No, this is the results of the vulnerability assessment. And if you read through the report that I gave you, on the last page, it says, "This plan is incomplete pending property boundary information provided by the town from a licensed surveyor." So...
The surveyor, the survey has been completed, the report's not been generated, is that accurate?
No, that is not accurate. The vulnerability assessment has been completed.
The next step is...
The next step is to move to the boundary survey.
You're saying boundaries of the road?
Yes.
Because I know...
Can I just have, if you're speaking, you introduce yourself?
I'm Christine Smith.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I saw Ron down there a couple times and he came back and we did it last fall. So that wasn't acceptable to whom?
It was, let me back up a little bit. We received a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Department of Marine Resources to conduct a boundary survey at Sabino Landing so that we could determine the boundaries of the road. Because we do not have that on file with the town, at least it's not as far as we can find. Part of that agreement is that we use a licensed and insured surveyor. Initially, we thought we could use SAG-HU surveying, which is Ron Beal. But realized later that he does not have insurance.
Okay, that, I understand that.
So we need to locate another surveyor in order to use those grant funds to finalize the boundary survey.
Right, and you can't use like mine property survey?
No.
Now, you need to do it at...
It's specifically to the road, on the, the boundary of the road. How far does, from the knee to center line?
Yeah.
So it's, I'd rather have, if we're going to resolve this, an official boundary survey of the parking lot on the road or the beach area on the road.
It's not a matter of preference, it's a matter of what must be done.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I didn't know that.
So...
Do you have an estimate of, of when that can happen or what we're doing?
Well, we have reached out to a couple of different surveyors in the interim. This report was supposed to be finalized by GDI, probably in January. And unfortunately, the lead person on the project became very ill. So the project was delayed. Initially, we thought that a surveyor in the Armistice was going to work with us to complete the survey. But I think because so much time had passed, that they decided not to take the project. So, part of what I want to talk about tonight is, number one, your level of interest in completing the survey, and I think that we probably want to do that.
I think we need to do it to resolve this.
To ask if you want to go out to bid or if you want to just use whether the licensed surveyor we can come up with.
So what is the estimate of cost on a survey?
We don't have an estimate.
So they're paying $5,000, if it goes over, we have to pay the rest?
Right.
So, well, in the $5,000 price point from our grant, what have we spent in this allocation for the report versus what's remaining?
The report was a separate grant. So that grant has been paid down. There's nothing left to use in the go-to grant.
So there's another $5,000 for the survey?
Yes.
I think we should, our, our current purchasing policy, anything over $5,000 needs to go to bid.
But is that $5,000 now? Where paying on the total grant and cost?
Well, if it goes over $5,000, I think we've exceeded our, our purchasing policy, generically speaking.
What I would suggest is that you continue your informal survey. And if it is not fruitful, then we advertise more widely. There are local surveyors who have recently submitted bids for other work. Perhaps we tune up to them. We could have an official decision in our drive meeting. That should be timely enough, isn't it?
I think so.
Because I don't know what is the data charges and I don't know how much time it would be. So it would be interesting to find out some kind of an estimate. If the $5,000 is sufficient, then...
Yeah, and based on conversations with Ron and with Barney, the lead consultant, I believe it'll count in less than $5,000, but there's no way to know that for sure.
Right.
And there's still a possibility that the surveyor in the Armistice will still want to work with us. And Barney said that even though there's no money left in the grant, he would contribute to that survey. So if we can make that deal work out, I think that would probably be in our best interests.
Well, my interest would be in facilitating, accomplishing that survey as quickly as possible.
Who do, who do we have to survey the boundary line for Bath and West Bath? Makes sense to recap them as well?
We could.
And we just have a better transaction going on with them as we speak that may help expedite?
Yeah, there's a possibility. That would be sidelines.
I'm sure with your...
Warren, do we have your hand?
Yes, I'm Warren Swanson, Cameron Marine Resources. People that make a living off that landing, it's our last deepwater landing, would like to actually request it to repair the landing to, just, I mean, not to do a water replacement, just like we did in the years past. Just enough so that you don't have, you know, you don't have to have that big bump at the end. And we can personally finance that, buy the shellfish argers, and have it repaired, but I was told that I could not do that because of this ongoing...
I think we need to wait till the survey is completed because we're trying to survey the land as it sits. I don't know if we should change any of that, is what happens.
What were you, what were you all thinking about doing?
Well, I was going to give conservation time for people to come down and do what we did last time. All we did was put a small amount of cement at the base of the landing so that when you back the boat down, it doesn't come over the edge of the landing. It's all washed away at this point. Somebody put some big heavy equipment down there and it cracked up. So we just want to replace it, that's all.
So it wouldn't be changing the lines of the...
Nothing. It's just, yes, the same landing, just get rid of the bone.
I don't see any reason why that wouldn't happen.
And it gives me an opportunity to give people conservation time, so...
Right, and, and it has been done before.
Oh, yeah, it's been done four, five times, so...
Jeff?
Jeff and Warren, yeah, we've been doing this on and off for twenty years down there. We just did it a couple of years ago. Somebody's dropping some very big morgue blocks down there. There's one still left, I'm guessing that must have been what broke it up. The concrete that we had put on before, the ready mixing end, it's, it's just going to roll away now. We just want to redo it, that's all. Not changing anything.
Was that caused by heavy equipment putting more into the stuff in down there?
Well, that's, I mean, our trucks don't do it, but there's big morgue blocks that have been coming in down there. So we can only assume that's what broke it up.
Yeah, and I see a lot of big floats that hardly make it down.
Yeah, they're coming in on the flatbeds.
Yeah. And it's...
It's probably a, that's going to be fifteen hundred or eighteen hundred ton block that's still at the land area now, it's been there for a week or so.
Yeah.
That one probably helped along with breaking the bottom.
So there's, there wouldn't be any way that that would interfere with any future improvements with, with the landing?
No, it's just at the very end, everything that we've just, we keep repairing at the very bottom forever. We just want to redo it because then all that broke up.
I've seen that with lots more.
And that's really what we want to keep our eye on now, is future improvements. Because once we have this boundary survey in place
Right.
and we're sure of what we own, then there are grants available to make significant improvements down there.
Right.
Because part of the findings in this report is that the ramp is too steep and too narrow and it's not a straight shot and it's just not safe.
Right.
So if we can come up with a plan
Right.
that would make sense to pursue that.
But is this a good thing to do in the meantime?
Yeah.
And do you have any objections?
All we're, all we're requesting is that we can fix it so we can use it. And it's not like we're doing anything different to the lanes.
Same with twenty-five years.
Just so that the commercial fishermen can use it. And there's only, I mean, it has nothing to do with the parking issue, it has nothing to do with it. Just the fact that we need to use it. It's the last one we got.
And you're not asking for any further budgetary considerations?
Nope, I will pay for it myself.
Well, we have money, don't we, in the...
There is money in, in, in the budget.
Yeah.
But we've all decided we will pay for it, you know what I mean? We need it.
Do we have, and I'm not trying to get off the board, do you have a sign going down there soon?
We do. What I did is I waited until after town meeting, until the changes to the Marine Resources ordinance was approved. I took that language and I had it put on the sign.
Okay.
So the sign hasn't come in yet, but it will.
But it's been ordered?
Yeah.
So can I set up an appointment? I mean, can I set up a time date to have us do this or am I not allowed to?
I think it's town property.
Well, that's the issue, it's town property, so you decide whether it's appropriate or not.
I move that the Marine Resources Committee be authorized to perform the repairs to the landing in the same way that it has been done in the past.
And not to exceed the current?
No.
Footprint? By which?
We're just going to get rid of the bone.
Right, that's, as has been done.
Has been done in the past, just like two years ago we did it.
Second motion, all in favor?
Thank you, lady.
Any other discussion?
Are you interested in reviewing any of the recommended improvements?
I'd like to read it.
Amazed with, because I have read it, it's the amount of information that's in here. Yeah, so it is.
It is, there's a lot here. Job that people did and things I'm going to do. I would recommend anybody who has any interest, either Marine Resources or Sabino residents, take the time to really look at it. There is a lot of good information in here.
And I would be happy to email the report to anybody who's interested in reviewing it.
The Road Commission, if it no longer exists, the Road Committee, it does not.
So just one other, just to go on record, and we said this last year, that, but particularly this year, in the last week, I've noticed, you know, I have the driveway to the right, Seaco. And you know how everybody has to turn around and I, and I know they back up my driveway, but it's actually not my part of the driveway, it's your part. And somebody gets stuck and spun out, and so, you know, I'm negotiating these bumps along the way down there. So just want to go on record that that is, you'll find that that's part of the town. It's right with, right at the edge where my driveway meets the ramp. And it just gets spun out, people's big trailers with probably the floats on it, bang up and dig a hole and like rock and where I have to drive.
Sorry, it needs to be filled.
Well, it just, it needs to be monitored, you know. We were, in the past, when we do our driveways, we used to go down to where we're gliding paved down to the ramp, because we used to maintain that whole area because it was potholes. And now we have a lot of neighbors who live nearby, but when it was just us there twenty-five years ago, in the winter, it'd be potholes and frozen and stuff. So that's something to put on the maintenance, you know, with the ditching and stuff. We can go with the shovel and move it, but again, it's steep, so when people back up with a trailer, it hits it.
I'm sorry, can you tell me your name?
Christine Smith, Twenty Seaco Drive.
Twenty Seaco.
Yeah. So there is some runoff things there. We're going to try to get somebody to dig a better ditch on our part of the driveway, but where it hits you, it kind of, you know, with that big rain, we had some gullies.
Everywhere.
Yeah, I know, it was, it was a big deal. We learned where all the problems are in that big rainstorm.
And where the water goes. And Jeff wants...
You're not in Seaco if you're driving straight into the landing, you guys are up on the...
On the bank, yeah.
Yeah. If no one has any objections, we're going to have twenty of us down there. We could take some shovels and rakes and make any holes in it we see there.
Yeah.
Most of us don't back up, I mean, I don't, but...
Yeah, now, you guys who go last time in the battery.
Probably did, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Figured that, I mean, if no one has any objections, we're going to have twenty of us down there.
Yeah.
Not everybody has to be mixing concrete.
Yeah.
We could scrape in any holes or anything, just keep it...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm just, in the future, something's got to be, if they do something, you know?
Jeff, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Ms. Smith. It's very important that we work together as a community.
I know.
So I appreciate the offer.
All right.
More of that might get us more of what we want to maintain rather than while the roads die out too bad.
Yep.
So I appreciate both of you.
And Steve's going to go down and look at that. There's, there's two sides on Sabino Road of gullies. I've gotten to, actually took pictures, I'm going to get a chance to print it. But there, the, the new Sabino Road is cracking on, you know, on both sides. The road, the actual road base.
It'd be great if you could email it to me and I can forward it.
I took them on the way.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And Suzanne, just one thing too, when they did the paving, they didn't have any graceful way to have Gold's Way, it's, it's like a, it's a drop.
And I'm sorry.
What was that?
Can I just have you identify yourself?
Oh, great, I'll see, sorry. Three girls way, but the, I don't know, they did...
The entrance into the...
Yeah, they can do something, grow out or something to just make it a little more graceful.
Don't shoot that SUV?
It's, I've seen like delivery trucks get stuck there and stuff, so...
It's called dig your own path, that's what we all did down the end. We went out when it was rainy and pushed up some stuff that we had a slight ramp. I've been looking at yours, thinking, aren't you guys getting sick of that? Just to get a feel.
There's just some material.
Yeah.
So how do we want to proceed? Do we want to have people go look at this?
Well, Steve needs to...
No, I'm talking about the report, I'm not talking about the road.
Yeah.
I think having, taking some more time to... Maybe we should have a book club on this.
Can you go, is there a list? He goes into the idea on the site? This is if you go to our homepage on the calendar and click on this meeting, it's part of the education packet, but anyone can email the town clerk and they'll get that sent out. You know, we're on the topic of parking and landings and they actually recommended new landings in Winningex Bay and Birch Point. Something intriguing that I've never seen before.
Because it's really hard to have a discussion when there's so much stuff to digest. Do you know what we're talking about?
If you have limited time, table six and seven are the most...
Do you put pages on?
The pages are not numbered.
Yeah, unfortunately. Oh, yes, they are. Table six is on page seven.
Oh, is it?
And...
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the...
Yeah, absolutely, and table seven is on page fourteen.
Is there any, so we need to get the...
We really need the boundary survey, right, or we can make any further decisions.
Okay, so why, let's get the boundary survey, let's, all of us who have any interest take a look at this and get that together after the boundary survey?
Yeah, and when we have that, there's a rolling ramp program issued by the state, the Small Harbor Improvement Project, which is perfect for West Bath. I can think of a number of ways that we can use funding from them to improve the situation.
How do you assess the grant?
Well, I'm not sure what the limit is. It's a fair amount, though. And, you know, nothing will ever be ideal down there because of the limited space that we're working with, but we can definitely improve what we have.
Well, I just, I mean, if you look at, I'm curious to see what they felt. Well, I just, I mean, if you look at, I'm curious to see what they felt of a place in Birch Point. What, if there are access points that they felt. Yeah, but I'm curious, but they didn't say, they didn't say where it was or they didn't say where.
Isn't that that ramp that's kind of on the Meadow side? It's kind of people put their floats.
I don't think there's, there's an access point. Is there an access point?
There is a place where they, I don't know.
There's no.
There is no, there is no. What's that?
Sort of the same, the lateral parking town.
It's up to two hundred, three thousand.
Yeah, it's kind of around the corner before you get to the door.
So where is that? Should I get the program? One car, a hundred, stack of my coffee. That's a good one.
Get like a Halloween or something.
Yeah, I can help you. We just have to push a button and come out.
What was the name of that grant, Christine?
Ship.
Ship?
Small Harbor Improvement.
Ship.
Not a T.
Not a T.
Or. It could turn into that.
It could be a ship show. Yes.
Okay, so Christine's gonna take the lead on the boundaries. See if she can find someone who's willing to do it and cost. And hopefully we'll have some explanation.
Yeah, we have until the end of December to spend that grant, so I think that's important information too. We do have some time.
While we're, I know, is there anything else for Sabino? I know that we do have signs coming down as soon as it comes in. I know what you guys did for a long time. Getting the wording right is very, very important. What a little word can change the meaning.
Susan Montgomery, I don't remember what the sign says.
It's been too long.
It's being, it's actually being reworded based upon.
The old parking sign? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, there's, there's access timelines. It's, there's, we have a new ordinance. And so the language of the new ordinance is gonna be now put on the sign.
Correctly. So I don't think that will be too much longer.
The other, the other thing is that with our shellfish warden now being deputies from the San Jacinto Sheriff, that if there is blatant violation, there would be some recourse. Although they're not going to enforce the ordinance, but they can talk nicely to people. And sometimes a police officer speaking nicely to you is persuasive.
I mean, they've been able to deter unlicensed clambers that have been accessing that location.
By possession.
Yeah. They, they can enforce that law.
So there's, so there's pieces, but there's, that, even that infringement in our neighborhood has, there's things that are going away to make it more of what it should be. I guess it does have to do with that.
But they don't enforce parking. They do talk nicely to people who may be not being nice to their neighbors. Just in the interest of peace. Peace officers. But they, they are authorized to enforce the shellfish laws because that's why we call them shellfish wardens. So there is a difference, but their presence will make some difference, I think.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm gonna set up an appointment on our next shelf at B, the end of last Tuesday this month, for us to work on the landing. And it'll probably be in July.
And not meet until September?
We usually take July and August off, yes.
Okay.
Any more comments, questions under Sabino Landing Resiliency Assessor? Okay, article number four. Annual and committee appointments.
I move approval of the appointments as presented in our packets.
My second pick? All in favor?
Shall we read this aloud?
For the record?
Yeah.
Please. I should argue. Constable Jonathan Bean, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, Jonathan Bean. Code Enforcement Officer E-911 Addressing Officer and Local Plumbing Inspector, Jonathan Bean. Annual Animal Control Officer Totstead, Harbor Master Joseph Valencourt, Public Access Officer Carly Perry, Road Commissioner Stephen Reno, Shellfish Warden Deputy Al Huntington and Deputy Garrett Olson, Tax Collector and Treasurer Julia House, Town Clerk Carly Perry, Investment Committee, three-year term, Paul Coombs, Board of Appeals, five-year term, Ashley Randall. We both need to say.
Yes.
While she's signing that, I just want to ask a question. We talked about last year, part of our road concerns was the geese on State and Meadows. And maybe trying to get the state to put up a sign. Do we know where that ever went?
No. I'd love to make contact with them.
We talked about trying to get, talked this day, we talked about a sign about geese crossing.
Caution, geese.
Yeah. Okay, can we just check and follow up on that? Because it's presenting itself as a problem. And as we talked about increased traffic on Meadows and Route One, I could see some significant accidents.
So that, um, is geese season. And we talked about the traffic on any Meadows and Route One. There was some discussion at the planning board meeting on Tuesday. And some of that dialogue was about the traffic and the timelines of school letting out, of BIW letting out, and maybe changing the timing and the light so there's a longer greeting during the BIW departure. But there's also some other concessions that perhaps BIW could stagger some of their scheduling.
I thought we were going to table that until we found out about the entrance and exit.
Yes, I was, I was, I was gonna recommend actually that perhaps the select board would consider grabbing some time on BIW's schedule to see how they can better support our town's needs and what they can help with the traffic and what we're seeing right now. I think that would be very beneficial as we're trying to figure out some of the next steps.
I don't think the yard can do anything. Staggering times would be also a union issue. So it would be, take a lot for them to change.
Well, we can still have a conversation to see what can be done to support the community. Because there's, there's definitely timelines and traffic and people. And just see if there's other, other things that we can do to support the town. That's what I put in. As we head into, Kathy, when we talk about the municipal decision, I'd like to see if we can gather other information to do that.
And we should probably just table for future agenda to find out where that going to go if we step in.
Yes. We, we, I think, further discussion is to worry about such a thing.
So the only thing I was asking, those geese, God knows, because there's so many baby geese that come right down. But you can just see the traffic's slowing on the brakes and I'm just.
You're in a good position to observe.
And I don't know if the state would do that, Sophie. Or if you don't mind asking me to, if you just checked into it.
Thank you.
Maybe not, and that's fine. If they say no, they say no.
Because we could do. Would there be a possibility that the town could do something like that? Because that's a state decision.
Yeah, we cannot.
What's the matter?
Because the state and the Meadows and the state, so it's all state.
Have you talked to the geese?
I think, I think you made plans for them to contribute.
There you go.
The. Yes. Because they make, I mean, poultry people make signs for private. You can put them on your land, your own driveway, saying goose crossing, chicken crossing, goat crossing.
She hit the nail on the head. I was gonna say, why don't you ask the guy that lives there? Maybe he lets you poke his horn.
He just got me, it felt like.
Anybody here now?
Yeah, but she's, it's probably not appropriate.
Those are cute, but definitely.
They are cute. My only concern is as we get the tourists.
Yeah.
They have no idea that we had wild geese.
They're doing something quirky would really bring their attention to it.
That's true. That's true.
Maybe read it.
I had our new, our new summer festival, the West Bath Goose Party. Yeah.
Probably.
No. Christine's is in plenty of her tree land.
Okay, uh, business item number five, county administrator's report.
Okay, I just have one item tonight. I put a memorandum in your packet under correspondence regarding LD seventeen oh six, which is an amended version of LD two thousand and three, the Affordable Housing and Accessory Long Line Act Law. So that has been postponed for an actment for town leading communities until July first of next year. So even though we're ready to go and we have language, we do not have to adopt anything until next year, which I think is really good timing since we'll be reviewing the land use ordinances anyway.
There was information that they would actually assist in the payment, whatever they will need, so.
So if there's any reexpenses involved, we can pass them along.
We can totally do that.
Well, I am glad to see that they've slowed that train down just a little bit because we need more time.
And thank goodness that Representative Hepler actually kept on it. We really need to continue to watch this because as we identified, not every, not every town has acceptable land for such measures.
And I would encourage the community too, this is really gonna affect you, to keep an eye on LD seventeen oh six. It could have a huge effect on our town, so it might be something you want to keep yourself.
Are you familiar with what that is?
Completely. Tell us more.
So essentially accessory dwellings that every lot, regardless of its size and zone area, may have one accessory dwelling at a minimum, potentially two if you're in a growth area. So overnight, the demand of services and whatnot in this community could change dramatically in what we have and what we would need.
So just keep your ear tuned, and if you have questions, we can try to find answers.
Yeah, I'm just curious about what exactly is an accessory dwelling? Like another, something that you could rent?
Yes, oh, it's designed to rent. It's actually designed to provide housing. So you have to have, if you have septic, you have to, your septic field has to accommodate whatever you're adding. Your well has to be able to produce enough water to accommodate whatever you're adding. So there's things that have to happen. Most of West Bath is on private water and sewer. But it's designed to provide affordable housing. Where would that maybe? So we, we actually have accessory dwelling right now. It's almost sort of like an in-law caregiver as part of our ordinance. It's a completely different, that you can't have a stove, an oven in it if it's not approved every five years. But these are full-fledged living structures that can be added to any parcels and only needs to step back another, other items.
Which could be a good idea, except when your house is, and the lot is on a ledge and we have limited aquifer. And so those, those kinds of issues are troubling. If your town is built on a ledge, which always is.
And if in fact these accessory dwellings are affordable. I think you're gonna think about.
Affordable.
Affordable for education, transportation, all of that stuff.
We're almost at capacity at our K-5 school. So I mean, so there's so many things that, and you can't, you have to accommodate that in theory in a year.
And is that supposed to also increase the income on the tax, real estate tax side?
It would, it would have that effect because anything would be taxed.
But you can't build a new school for fifty people a year. I mean, there's just stuff that can't.
Too fast, too.
It's.
Okay, business item number six, future agenda items.
Committee, the committee thing?
Yes, that will be July sixth. I think that we should probably tackle a number of administrative items at the next meeting. I know that we've been focusing a lot on roads. But there are other internal administrative items that we need to wrap up. So we should really be ready and focused for the next meeting.
Is there any material that we will need before the next meeting?
You have the policy on town committee procedures. I will do my best to get the packet out earlier than normal so that you can see the rest of the items.
And we had the discussion about civil discourse within meetings. Are we thinking about including that in the committee or having this separate?
Well, code conduct was already approved by this board. And I think that covers the civil discourse.
All right.
Do you want to have people sign those?
Yes, that's why I want to get this rolling. Because first of July, you know, immediately following your meeting, I want to get everything out for signatures.
Are you being disruptive?
Civil discourse.
Oh, me?
You guys passing notes back there?
Any public comment?
Mosquito.
Besides mosquitoes.
I have a public comment.
Could you just say your name?
Joseph Bilham, seventy-six Mountain Road.
Thank you.
Sure, what was your last name?
Bilham, B-I-L-O-B-E-A-U. And I don't expect any response to this. I just wanted on record. I'm gonna say what I gotta say, and then I'm on my way out of here, just so we all understand. This is in regard to the Seekus Point subdivision that we had to endure at seventy-six Mountain Road and the disruptions. The West, the Town of West Bath Planning Board's unilateral approval in 2019 without any abutter notification of the major changes was inappropriate and abuse of their authority. How can the West Bath Planning Board members justify not giving abutting landowners any notification of the major changes proposed at the Seekus Point subdivision when abutters were properly notified of the original low-impact subdivision plan? As an abutting property owner, we are, were one hundred percent deceived by the West Bath Planning Board when we agreed to the original plan that was presented to abutters at the planning board meeting we had received notification to attend regarding the original proposed Seekus Point subdivision development. Our lives have been ruined for five years by the West Bath town officials refusing to do your jobs in enforcing ordinances and knowingly allowing building in violation of building permits that were issued at the Seekus Point subdivision. The West Bath Code Enforcement Officer, Administrator, and Select Board have allowed and enabled years of lawlessness and relentless destruction to occur affecting the entire area surrounding the Seekus Point subdivision. You people have been covering for John Stadler and his contractor, Reno Construction. The abuse from the Seekus Point, constant construction noise and unsightfulness for years on end has caused our family great stress and irreparable harm to the point of having to move and sell a home we had planned on raising our children in at a significant loss of over a hundred thousand dollars. We had invested thousands of dollars and many hours improving our home at seventy-six Mountain Road only to be driven out by West Bath town officials refusing to hold the Seekus Point developer accountable and looking the other way while the quality of life of residents in the entire surrounding neighborhood was ruined. Our property value has been greatly diminished by the action of the Town of West Bath officials and their refusal to respond to or even acknowledge valid complaints from us as well as other neighboring property owners over the past five or six years, directly impacted by the Seekus Point subdivision construction. Seekus Point subdivision construction. Emailed complaints and concerns sent to the Code Enforcement Officer, Select Board, and Town Administrator regarding Seekus Point have gone unanswered and ignored for years. My wife, as well as several other affected property owners, have testified that Select Board meetings over the years do only be completely ignored, given lame excuses, empty words, and stall tactics by the West Board, West Bath Select Board members, I'm almost a... In recent contact with State Representative Hepler, we were told the Town of West Bath Select Board will work with us and actually be addressing the Seekus Point issues. As relief for the Town of West Bath Select Board, Code Enforcement Officer, and Town Administrator knowingly and willingly making our home unbearable to live in for over five years by completely disregarding and ignoring valid surrounding property owner complaints, willingly enabling and encouraging years of lawlessness and destruction to continue from the Seekus Point subdivision, we are requesting a five-year refund of our property taxes that we paid at seventy-six Mountain Road, forty thousand dollars, from the years between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three. Our family has suffered greatly as a result of this abuse. We have been unable to enjoy any peace and enjoyment of our property at seventy-six Mountain Road during these years, to the point of being forced out of our own home. The Town of West Bath has stolen five years of our lives when our children were the youngest, at their youngest, a time which should have been the most enjoyable time of our lives, has been robbed from us. Over the past five or six years, we have accumulated hundreds of hours of recorded video and audio evidence from many different times of day and night of the relentless morning to night, six to seven days per week, heavy equipment and construction vehicle noise and disruption from Seekus Point subdivision construction. Since June of twenty nineteen, and immediately following our original complaints to the West Bath Administrator and Code Enforcement Officer, we have been keeping accurate written logs and journals supporting documentation of this ongoing abuse. We have also, uh, been working with an attorney who believes we do have some standing for a civil case against the Town of West Bath. However, as an act of good faith, we have decided that requesting the Town of West Bath refund the tax money for the years that they have ruined our lives would be a fair settlement, so we can all just move on from this quickly, and our family can put the nightmare of living in this town behind us, as opposed to having to put down a ten thousand dollar retainer and filing a long and drawn-out lawsuit for our damages. If the Town of West Bath continues to be unwilling to accept responsibility for their blatant disregard for the damages they have directly caused our family, we fully plan to sue for civil damages far in excess of the current relief we are seeking. We will also be handing over the hundreds of hours of audio and video recordings, along with all supporting documentation regarding this, to the media outlets, any media outlet willing to listen. The Town of West Bath elected and appointed officials are not above the law and need to be held accountable for the damage you have caused and the absolute hell you have put my family through. We suggest you, Select Board members, Administrator, and Code Enforcement Officer, discuss the matter with a taxpayer-funded lawyer you've all been hiding behind for years. Depending on my work schedule, my wife or I will plan on attending the next Select Board meeting to find out your decision. If the West Bath town officials think they can just destroy the lives of longtime residents, you are mistaken. I promise you, whatever it takes, we will not go away until justice is served and West Bath town officials answer for what you've done to our family. We have done absolutely nothing to deserve the abuse we have endured for years at the towns, at the hands of the Town of West Bath. That's all I have to say.
Any other public comment? Are we in motion, Debbie?
Second.